Good afternoon, we'll be starting a Devers Town Hall meeting for quarter three reentry plan in about one minute. Good afternoon and welcome to Devers Town Hall meeting for our quarter three reentry plan. I'm going to go ahead and begin today. My name is Keith Still and I am the principal here at Devers K eight. I will be managing trying to let make sure I let people in as they come into the Zoom. But this session will give you a little bit of information about the quarter three reentry plan. School will begin for students again February eighth. Learning plan for quarter three, we have two options. Option number one is the hybrid learning plan. In the hybrid learning plan, students will go two days in person and three days asynchronous. Bearcat option number two is Bearcat Cyber, which they will do five days of asynchronous learning and teacher check-ins. We will still continue on complex needs and special education and pre-K. They will continue with four days in person with one day asynchronous. And virtual learning option is limited to medically necessary students.
Okay.
For the hybrid learning plan, we will have two cohorts. Cohort A, students will attend Monday and Tuesday. They will be learning at home Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Independent learning from home, meaning students will work on assignments, view prerecorded lessons from teachers, and do other activities at home. Group B or cohort B will attend in person on Wednesday and Thursday. They will have learning at home on Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, and they will continue independent learning from home, meaning students will work on assignments, view prerecorded lessons from their teachers, etc. Special education students should expect to receive communications from the Office of Special Education around your learning plan, and Fridays will have no live sessions or in-person classes. Fridays will be asynchronous learning days. Buildings will open only for in-person parent appointments and supports as needed.
No sound? Hello?
Hybrid learning schedule for quarter three. This is how the day will go for quarter three. School will begin for teachers starting at seven forty-five to eight twenty-five. They will have their teacher planning time. At eight twenty-five, teachers will start to move to their assigned positions. And school will start for students at eight thirty a.m. Student arrival protocols will be implemented and breakfast will be served in the classrooms. They will also have a homeroom and begin their positive action lessons at eight thirty. For some students, special needs students, they'll begin their day at nine fifteen. Academic courses, instructional periods for complex needs students will run from nine fifteen to two forty-five. All other students will be dismissed at three P.M., and teachers will be dismissed at three fifteen. We will also have a Bearcat Scholars Hybrid Learning Program for Learning Loss Recovery. It'll run from three to six thirty P.M. Friday asynchronous days will have no live sessions on Fridays. Students are to complete assignments given by their teachers. Families are encouraged to contact their child's school for specific in-person services available. There'll be social emotional assistance, technology assistance, and academic assistance on Fridays if needed. Health and safety expectations. All faculty, staff, and students are required to wear face coverings at all times while on district property and contracted district property, i.e. your buses, except when eating, drinking, or engaging in exaggerated physical activity. All faculty, staff, and students are required to practice proper hand washing. All faculty, students, and staff are required to practice social distancing as best as they can. And all faculty, staff, and students are required to complete a temperature check upon entry to all district buildings. Per P.A. law, students missing required immunizations will be excluded from school. Check with your school nurse to see if your immunizations are current.
Expectativas de salud y seguridad. Todos los profesores, el personal y los estudiantes deben llevar tapabocas en todo momento mientras se encuentren en las propiedades del distrito y en las propiedades contratadas por el distrito. Por ejemplo, las autobuses, excepto cuando beban o realicen actividades físicas exageradas. Todo el personal docente y los estudiantes deben lavarse las manos correctamente. Todos los profesores, personal, y estudiante deben practicar el distanciamiento social de la mejor manera posible. Se requiere que todos los profesores, personal, y estudiantes se sometan a un control de temperatura al entrar en todos los edificios del distrito. Según la ley de Pensilvania, los estudiantes que no tengan las vacunas requeridas serán excluidos de la escuela. Verifique con la enfermera de su escuela para ver si sus vacunas están al día.
Attendance Information. Attendance will be taken daily at schools and at home. At home, teachers will take attendance for each class session for all students K through twelve. Students are required to log on, participate, and complete assignments in order to be marked present. Failure to log on and complete assignments will result in an unexcused absence.
Información sobre la asistencia. La asistencia será tomada diariamente en la escuela y en casa. En casa, los maestros tomarán asistencia por cada clase sesión para todos los grados desde kinder al dos. Se requiere que todos los estudiantes estén conectados, participando, y completando asignaciones para que les puedan marcar que están presentes. El no conectarse y no completar las asignaciones resultará en una ausencia no justificada.
Plan for social emotional needs of students. We will now be using a positive action curriculum for social emotional check-in and lessons daily in homeroom. Positive behavior interventions and supports. PBIS multidisciplinary team reviews students with identified concerns and establishes supports interventions in class. Guidance counselors and school social workers will be available daily as needed. We will also have P.A. counseling, which are school-based therapists on-site, and M.H.I.B.V. caseworkers contracted with the district to provide support and resources to students with mental health or intellectual disability diagnosis.
Plan para los estudiantes con necesidades socioemocionales. Plan de acción positiva, chequeo social, emocional, y lesiones diarias en el salón de clase. El equipo multidisciplinario de intervención y apoyo al comportamiento positivo revisará a los estudiantes con preocupaciones identificadas y establece apoyos e intervenciones en clase. El consejo de orientación y el trabajador social de la escuela están disponibles diariamente según sea necesario. Dos terapeutas de P.A. counseling están en el lugar. Trabajador social de M.H.D.D. contratado por el distrito para proporcionar apoyos y recursos a los estudiantes con diagnóstico de salud mental o discapacidad intelectual.
Arrival Procedures. Parents should answer these health screening questions before sending students to school each day. If you answer yes to any of these screener questions, please contact Devers School Nurse at seven one seven eight four nine one two one zero for additional guidance. Here are the questions you should ask your students each day. Have you been in close contact with confirmed case of COVID- nineteen? Are you experiencing a cough, shortness of breath, or a sore throat? Have you had a fever in the past forty-eight hours? Have you had a new loss of taste or smell? Have you had vomiting or diarrhea in the last twenty-four hours? Are you currently waiting for test results from COVID- nineteen test?
Procedimientos a la llegada a la escuela. Los padres deben responder a estas preguntas de evaluación de la salud antes de enviar a los estudiantes a la escuela cada día. Si su respuesta es afirmativa a cualquiera de estas preguntas de detención, por favor, póngase en contacto con la enfermera de la Escuela Devers al siete uno siete ocho cuatro nueve doce diez para obtener información adicional.
Entering the building, all faculty, staff, and students and other visitors will be expected to wear masks while on school property. We're asking that all visitors follow social distancing protocols and refrain from assembling in any types of groups. Students will arrive at assigned door at eight thirty a.m. Students should not arrive before eight thirty a.m. to avoid students congregating in large groups. Students will enter the building by walking through a temperature scanner. Students who have a temperature reading above one hundred point five degrees will be escorted to the dirt nurse for additional screening. Any student exhibiting signs of illness will have parents, guardians contacted for student pickup. Students who are exhibiting any signs of illness should not be brought to school. At eight thirty, teachers will meet students at their assigned door to enter the building. Breakfast will be provided in the classroom each morning. In the classroom, students will practice social distancing protocols to ensure the health and safety of all. Masks should be worn at all times and cover the mouth and nose area. An additional mask should be brought to school in an individual baggie to be stored in the classroom in case of an emergency. Students are permitted to bring a leak-free water bottle to school for hydration. Water fountains will not be accessible. In all areas of the building, students and staff will be expected to practice social distancing protocols to ensure the health and safety of all.
Esperan que todo el profesorado, el personal, los estudiantes, y los visitantes lleven una máscara mientras estén en la propiedad de la escuela. Pedimos que todos los visitantes sigan los protocolos de distanciamiento social y se abstengan de reunirse en cualquier tipo de grupo.
Los estudiantes llegan a la puerta asignada a las ocho y treinta de la mañana. Los estudiantes no deben llegar antes de las ocho y treinta de la mañana para evitar que los estudiantes se congreguen en grupos grandes. Los estudiantes entrarán en el edificio pasando por el escáner de temperatura. Los estudiantes que tengan una lectura de temperatura superior a cien punto cinco grados serán acompañados a la enfermera para una revisión adicional. Se contará con los padres tutores de cualquier estudiante que presente signos de enfermedad para que los recojan. Los estudiantes que están mostrando cualquier signo de enfermedad no deben ser traídos a la escuela. A las ocho y treinta, los profesores se reunirán con los alumnos en la puerta asignada para entrar al edificio. El desayuno se proporcionará en las aulas cada mañana. En el aula, los estudiantes practicarán protocolos de distanciamiento social para garantizar la salud y la seguridad de todos. Las mascarillas deben llevarse en todo momento y cubrir la zona de la boca y la nariz. Se debe traer una mascarilla adicional a la escuela en una bolsa individual para guardarla en el aula en caso de emergencia. Los estudiantes pueden tener una botella de agua sin fugas a la escuela para hidratarse. Las fuentes no serán accesibles. En todas las áreas del edificio, los estudiantes...
Dismissal Procedures. At three P.M., teachers will escort students to their assigned dismissal doors. Parents should arrive promptly at three P.M. for pickup. Parents and guardians and students should clear school property as quickly as possible. Assembling on the playground and other school areas will not be permitted. And all visitors on school property will be asked to follow social distancing and mask protocols.
Procedimiento de salida. A las tres de la tarde, los maestros acompañarán a los estudiantes a las puertas de salida asignadas. Los padres deben llegar puntualmente a las tres de la tarde para recogerlos. Los padres tutores y los alumnos deberán abandonar la escuela lo antes posible. No se permitirá reunirse en el patio de recreo ni en otras áreas de la escuela. Cualquier visitante en la propiedad de la escuela se le pedirá que siga los protocolos de distanciamiento social y el uso de tapabocas.
Breakfast and lunch. Breakfast will be provided each morning in the classroom as in the past. Lunch will be served for students in both Cohort A and B each day. For students attending in-person learning, a lunch will be served in the cafeteria. A grab-and-go lunch will be available for pickup at the cafeteria doors when students are participating in their virtual asynchronous learning days. A grab-and-go lunch will be available for pickup at the cafeteria doors daily for our Bearcat Cyber students. In the cafeteria, students will be expected to follow all social distancing protocols.
Desayuno y almuerzo. El desayuno se proporcionará cada mañana en el aula de clase como en el pasado. El almuerzo se servirá para los estudiantes de los grupos A y B cada día. Para los estudiantes que asisten al aprendizaje en persona, se servirá un almuerzo en la cafetería. Cuando los estudiantes participen en los días de aprendizaje virtual, se podrá recoger un almuerzo para llevar en la puerta de la cafetería. Un almuerzo para llevar estará disponible para recoger en las puertas de la cafetería todos los días para nuestros estudiantes de Bearcat Cyber. En la cafetería, se espera que los estudiantes sigan todos los protocolos de distanciamiento social.
Technology Support. Technology issues, please visit our website to submit a student help desk form Families can also text at seven one seven six seven six three four seven seven if there are any issues with the link or filing, filling out a form.
Apoyo tecnológico. Problemas de tecnología, por favor visite nuestro sitio en la red para someter un formulario de ayuda al estudiante. Si hay algún problema con los enlaces o llenando el formulario, las familias pueden enviar un mensaje de texto al siete uno siete seis siete seis treinta y cuatro setenta y siete.
Where to find out any other information you need? You can check the district website at www.ycs.k12.p-a.us. You can check our district Facebook at York City Schools, our district Twitter at York City Schools, and we also have the district app. You can download it on any Android or iPhone device. We will also continue to make district robocalls with important information, and you can check the district email. Visit the website at www.ycs.k12.p-a.us/community-web-portal for instructions on how to sign up for the community web portal where you can update your email address.
¿Dónde encontrar información importante? Puede encontrar la información en el sitio, en la web del distrito, en la página de Facebook o de Twitter. Visite su tienda de aplicaciones Android o iPhone. Entre al teclado York City School District desde ser la primera opción en la parte superior. Baje la aplicación y su dispositivo y asegúrese que las notificaciones estén funcionando. Verifique esta aplicación con frecuencia para las informaciones más recientes en la sesión de noticias.
Important dates to remember. January twenty-eighth, there will be no parent-teacher conferences. It'll be a regular instruction day. January twenty-ninth, parent-teacher conferences have been canceled. February eighth will be the first hybrid learning day for Group A. February tenth will be the first hybrid learning day for Group B. February fifteenth will still be a holiday, so no school for students, and the buildings will be closed. February seventeenth will be early dismissal. Students will be dismissed at twelve P.M. March seventeenth, no early dismissal, it'll be a full instruction day. And March thirty-first, no early dismissal, full instruction day.
Fechas importantes. El veintiocho de enero del dos mil veintiuno, las conferencias de padre y maestro han sido canceladas. Será un día de instrucción regular. El veintinueve de enero, las conferencias de padre y maestro han sido canceladas. Para el ocho de febrero del dos mil veintiuno, el aprendizaje híbrido comenzará con el grupo A. El diez de febrero, el aprendizaje híbrido comienza para el grupo B. El quince de febrero será día feriado, no hay escuela para los estudiantes, las escuelas permanecerán cerradas. El diecisiete de febrero tendremos salida temprano, los estudiantes salen a las doce del mediodía. El diecisiete de marzo, el aprendizaje híbrido comenzará. El treinta y uno de marzo, el aprendizaje híbrido comienza.
Thank you, Bearcats. Remember, we are all in this together.
Gracias, Bearcats. Recuerden, estamos en esto juntos.
All right, I see a couple of questions in the chat. First question I see is cyber going to be mentioned in this town hall meeting? Pretty much as far as cyber, there won't be any changes unless you're moving to cyber for the first time. You should receive information of how to access cyber from your current teacher, and that program is self-guided and self-paced. So we are asking that students complete a certain amount of work each day as far as cyber goes, but most of it is really going to be self-guided. I had a second question in the chat. I'm also looking for information like link, web address, etc. Those were in the presentation. You can go to the district email or the district website and receive that information again. So we can always check the district website.
Okay, so the cyber is there? That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, you're looking for information just on cyber?
Yeah, Alex is going to cyber because we haven't been vaccinated yet, and we're in the risk group.
Okay. What type of information would you be looking for?
Well, sign-on website for the cyber. I have not gotten any emails with a link from the teacher, but she did ask us if we were going with cyber and said that there was another district meeting and that the council would be coming up with a decision. Then we found out that it was approved to go hybrid, so we had to go cyber.
Right, so you should receive all of that information this upcoming week.
Okay, so by what day?
I would say no later than the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, okay. And the end of the marking period is when?
The end of the marking period is today?
Today, okay, so, all right, so we got a little skip in that. There's a gap, Mr. Still.
Well, you know, the first, yeah, well, the next marking period does start on Monday, but with us moving to a hybrid learning model.
There's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so if he doesn't start until the twenty-eighth, he'll be okay, not in any trouble.
No.
Okay, cool.
No, not at all.
All right.
And we're not expecting any of this to take hold until the eighth anyway.
Okay.
February. So like, you can continue doing what he's been doing until February eighth.
February eighth, okay, so he doesn't have to switch to cyber right away at the start of the marking period?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, because you know Alex, he gets a little worked up about not knowing it's black and white. If it's not black and white, he starts freaking out.
I understand totally. No, he doesn't have to worry about that until the eighth, the eighth is the day that...
Okay. All right, well, then I'll go up and I'll explain it to him. Thank you for answering my question.
No problem.
And take care of yourself.
You do the thing. Any other questions you can post in the chat or raise your hand, and I'm here to answer if I can. Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, I thank you. If you receive a communication from the nurse about vaccination that are not up to date, then they would need their vaccination. We're not talking about the COVID- nineteen vaccinations to return. We're talking about your regular run-of-the-mill vaccinations. COVID- nineteen vaccinations. Um, COVID nineteen vaccinations, we will not expect people to have those a- at this time period. So if you're looking for, if you're being, um, if you don't have your immunizations, those are the things that we're talking about, not vaccinations. We don't expect you to have vaccinations passive yet. Any other questions you would like to add to the chat? Alright, not seeing any other questions pop into the chat at this time. I would like to thank all of you for taking the time to come out and listen to the information that we were able to present to you. I hope that you yourself are healthy and safe uh, as that you continue to, um, bear with us. We're doing the best that we can. Um, we are going to be excited to see your children return. Um, we're happy to support you in any way that we can. Thank you for participating today and have a fantastic Friday evening.